Thank you for the help. So we're gonna start making those... do it from here. So all of this is all... we're taking... we're trying to make it happen. That'll be... I'll make it happen. No, I'm just... so we're talking about... we're... we're... we'll keep doing what we have. You know?
...
Good evening, and welcome to this evening's Select Board meeting. It is Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for playback Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Please also be advised that the open meeting law gives the Chair of a public body discretion to decide if public comments will be permitted, but the law does not require that a public body allow public comment or public participation during its meetings. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Chief Ziole, could you please lead us?
I would lead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have community announcements, and we have a very special way to begin this. Logan Hatch, I understand that you have received your Eagle Scout, and you're going to be talking to us about your Eagle Scout project. Could you please come on up? Hello, and welcome.
Hello. So yeah, I'm Logan Hatch, and a couple of weekends ago, I actually earned Eagle Scout. But for my project, I had helped out Rockland Recreation and Mrs. Blaney with building an obstacle course over at Hartstuf Park, over on the backside of the field. So they had sort of like a rundown obstacle course. So what I did is added six obstacles, fundraised, helped plan them, found someone to make the blueprints for them, and ended up building them.
Congratulations. I've actually seen them, and I've had my daughter play on them, and you did a spectacular job.
Thank you. Yeah, I know the night that we had finished them, there were actually people already out playing on them, so that was really cool.
Well, that is a good sign that it's going to be a wonderful success. Congratulations. Do we have comments from the board?
Just congratulations, and look forward to some great contributions in the future, hopefully.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'm just curious, how'd you fundraise for it?
So we actually did a Hilliards chocolate fundraiser, so I got a whole ton of boxes from Hilliards, and then had scouts from my troop go around, mostly their parents' works.
Good plan. Really good plan. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, the Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors that you can achieve and earn as a young person, and that honor will follow you the rest of your life. I'm honored to present this to you this evening from the Select Board. But we have the Town of Rockland presents the Certificate of Recognition to Logan Hatch. In recognition of your Eagle Scout service project improving the Warrior Obstacle Course at Hartstuf Park, our community extends to you its appreciation for your tremendous dedication on behalf of the Town of Rockland, Massachusetts, this October 15th, 2024. There we go.
Wait for Tiffany to come back.
I also noticed that you have some wonderful supporters. Can you, is your troop leader here, or can you tell me who came to support you tonight?
Yeah, these are some of the oldest scouts from my troop. There's four of them, and then, and then Mrs. Rose back there, who's one of the members of our troop committee.
Wonderful. As it takes a village, can we also have everybody who came with you tonight come on up for a picture? We have the Recreation Director, Jean Blaney, with program announcements and acknowledgements.
So, I think I've given you guys this before. These are the actual dates that we have coming up for all of our events for 2024.
Thanks.
And I'm sorry they didn't make it into your packet. We've been just a little bit. So I just have to say, I actually had Logan when he was in Chipmunks. I was his teacher. So I've known Logan for a very, very long time, and I couldn't be prouder. Whenever he called to say that he was going to do his Eagle Scout project with us, I was touched. So I just want to thank Logan, his family, who I've got to know, and they are fantastic people, and really an asset to our community. So that's just my little spiel. I won't embarrass Logan anymore. Just so you know, he's going to go into school for engineering, so we could use him back here in Rockland. So thanks for letting me talk real quick. I never did our summer recap. We had a really good summer, excellent numbers. I'm not going to bore you with all of the details, but we had a great summer. We had some new programs that got off the ground running as we do in the fall, and we continue to grow some of our adult programming throughout the fall into the winter, spring, and hopefully beyond. So be on the lookout for that. And then, more importantly, I just wanted to say some quick thank yous for the Rockland Fall Festival. I first want to thank all of the town departments that were involved, and there were many. So I'd like to thank police and fire, the highway department, the parks department, my own department, Doug, Courtney. We get a lot of support to put on these very large events, so, and I truly appreciate it. Treasurer's Office, the accounting office. You wouldn't think that all of the offices are involved, but they are. I want to thank our sponsors. Our top sponsors were Mountain One and Rockland Federal Credit Union. They were really big supporters, as was Electra Switch, A.W. Perry, Amos Phelps, and Players. So not only was Players there serving, they gave us additional money to help run that festival, as we know how Jackie is always very supportive of us. So I gave you, I gave you some of our 2024 dates after the Fall Festival. The next up is October 25th, Terror on the Trails. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's at Hartstuf Park. So it is a, it's not a kid event, it's a spooky event. We do jump scares. So we do have an out, too, so if people, or younger people, get really scared, they can take a right turn and get out of the woods, but it is in the woods. So, you know, appropriate footwear. And if there is a rain date, it will be the next day. My staff is going to kill me for saying rain, but. Puzzle Palooza, which is off and running. People are already registering for that. I think it's going to be our biggest one yet. We're going to be holding that in the gym at McKinley on November 8th, so you can go, folks can go onto our website for that. And then afterwards, we have the Holiday Stroll on November 30th. Everyone knows the Holiday Stroll. Pam Murphy asked us to take it over last year, and we, of course, said yes. So we're just in the planning phases for that, but that's coming up, and we've changed that time. That's one of the few changes that we made. It's from 3:00 to 6:00. We had a lot of feedback from a lot of different people that asked if we could just change the time so they could have their younger ones out, get them out early, and then get them to bed, so. And then lastly, for the last event that we have this year, December 14th, is our very popular candy cane hunt. Weather permitting, we like to hold it outside with our special guest from The Grinch, and maybe the big guy himself might be there, too. So that's kind of all I have right now. It's a quick little snapshot for what we've been doing and what we have coming up. And I just want to say how much I really appreciate some of the departments are here, their, all their support for everything that we do. If we didn't have support from all of our departments, we couldn't do what we do. So I really appreciate it, and you guys, of course.
Thank you, Jean, and then congratulations again to you and your team for the Fall Festival. It was spectacular.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. Any comments or questions for Jean?
Thanks.
Next, we have 12/19/2023 executive session minutes were approved and released at the 10/1/2024 meeting. Doug?
You pretty much stole my thunder there, Tiffany. I just wanted to publicly announce that those executive session minutes were approved in executive session at our last meeting, so we're just making the public aware, and that's all that announcement is.
Thank you. Next, we have October 1st minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor? Thank you. New business, $1.5 million sewer department borrowing. Review and approved notes, results, and related matters.
If I can just start, Tiffany, while I think Allison Sullivan, our treasurer, is here, and I know she loves being on camera, so she's gonna, she's gonna come up, but I'll just kind of tee it up for her and for the rest of the, for the rest of you. As a reminder, we authorized $1.5 million in borrowing at our last annual town meeting that could be commingled with $1 million in ARPA that the board set aside. The treasurer, Allison Sullivan, did the borrowing. It was a temporary note, a ban, a bond anticipation note, so years come up, and so it's time to reissue those notes. She has all the results and all the details. You have all the material in your packet, as well as the full document from Bond Counsel, which Lori can reference when she makes the motion, should you vote to approve these, which we obviously recommend that you do. For any of you without, I'll turn it over to Allison if she wants to give any details or summaries.
Sure. So the sale date was officially 10/8. I believe Fidelity was the one that gave us the best rate of a 4% coupon rate with a little bit of a premium, so that's always good. Other than that, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions or comments?
So just so the public knows, can we reiterate what the bond is for and what it's going to be covering for the sewer?
Sure, I will say that.
I'll take care of that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's been a bit of a moving target. I think initially, when this was authorized, my understanding from talking to the sewer commissioners, that their intent was this was, you know, kicking off some of the initial phases of design work for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. But then after that point, other things started happening at the plant, the digester boiler, the generator, things like that. So some of the priorities were readjusted, but it is essentially going toward design with the consultants, the engineers that the sewer commissioners hired for future improvements at the plant to help get the plant back into compliance with all of its permits.
With that, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Yeah. Lori's going to read it.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to accept the vote prepared by Bond Counsel.
Second. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Next, I'd like Attorney John Clifford, if you could just come up.
John, as we have had concerns brought up about the Select Board comments, and I know, I believe it was two meetings ago, John, you were here, and John, you had mentioned that Select Board member Ellard had questioned, could we potentially modify the Select Board comment kind of protocol? And I have given it much thought, and I wanted to suggest and discuss tonight with the board, my recommendation would be, as have been used in the past practice, Select Board comments were used to update, they were used to congratulate, they were used to save the date type, you know, very positive items. And I wanted to recommend that should, moving forward, and for my intents and purposes, tonight's discussion is everything from here moving forward, that should a person, a Select Board member want to discuss actions, or a person or a department, that they email me, and that we can put that on a future agenda. So with that said, I would like to know, do we have any, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, Tiffany, I have no issue with, with what your suggestions are. I'm just curious, where you see liaison updates coming in? Is that something that we should just put on the agenda?
I think so.
Because, I mean, very briefly the other day, you know, I'd met with Open Space, and I just said, it is a positive meeting. We had a good meeting, and just let you guys know what future steps might be, stuff like that, you know? So, I mean, I'm not sure if that necessarily rises to an agenda item, but.
Right.
Could just have a placeholder every week or every meeting, just that way.
I think that's a great idea.
I guess we could throw it under reasonably anticipated matters, because if it's something that you didn't know that I was at a meeting on, say, a Friday night, the agenda's already out, and I just want to talk about it on Tuesday, that should be okay.
And just to keep that segment for liaison meetings, I think that's a great idea, John.
Yeah, that's fine. It makes sense. I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with requesting agenda items be put on a future meeting to discuss that kind of stuff.
Great. And that's something that, John, we could either have a vote, or we could just kind of take it as a general consensus. Do you have a recommendation either way?
I mean, you could vote it as a board policy, but the board policies are always subject to the members of the board, but I think it's, as we discussed, I think it's perfectly appropriate if you just have the consensus that this is how we're going to do it moving forward. You don't need anything formal.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Going on to the next agenda item, we have the Sewer Department update, and Doug was going to let you begin with an overview. We have the resignation of the sewer commissioners.
Thanks, Tiffany. As the board knows, and I think as many people in the community know, the entire Board of Sewer Commissioners has resigned. It was a week ago, Friday, late in the afternoon, that then Chairman Hessian popped into my office. I thought he was coming in to talk to me about a project that we were working on together, so I was a little bit caught off guard and surprised, but he, we met for probably 45 minutes or so, and he explained that he was resigning. And then he went further to say that the entire board was resigning, the other two members as well. Initially, the letter said effective immediately. When I asked him about the date, he actually said, well, the following Monday. He had a couple of things he wanted to finish up, so he amended the letter to say the following Monday, which was last Monday. So he turned that in with the town clerk. It was stamped in, so that is official. So the commissioners, there are no longer any currently serving commissioners at the Sewer Department. And as the board knows, there is no superintendent in place, so we're currently without any leadership in that department. While there is the operator, the private contractor, Viola, that runs the day-to-day operations of the plant, they don't have any oversight without a Board of Sewer Commissioners or without a superintendent, and they also don't do the work. And they also don't do the work associated with everything outside of the plant, outside the gate, with the entire collection system. So there's still quite a bit of responsibility that needs to be put in place, really immediately, to maintain proper operations, plan for all the upgrades. There's multiple contracts with engineers for tens of millions of dollars' worth of work that, as of right now, is completely unsupervised, so we need to have someone overseeing that, again, as well as with issues that could come up with the collection system anywhere out in town with, you know, with the pipes underground, pump stations, things like that. There are a couple of options, and I'll state kind of the obvious to Attorney Clifford, if, you know, if he wants to correct anything that I'm saying or has a different opinion, you know, please let me know. I think your options are, you could do nothing and just leave things alone. I think that would be a bad idea. I think that would be a mistake, again, because the operator needs to have some supervision as well as all of the engineers and contracts that are certain, that are currently undergoing active design, and they need feedback from the owner in order to continue their work, as well as all the work, again, in the collection system. So I think it would be a mistake. I would recommend two things. One is, I'd recommend that you look to appoint sewer commissioners that would fill the gap between now and the next annual town election, which is the second Saturday in April. Normally, if there's a vacancy on another board, under mass general law, there'd be a joint vote between the two boards. In this case, where the entire Board of Sewer Commissioners has resigned, it would just be solely up to you to appoint those temporary or interim commissioners. It would then be up to those individuals if they wanted to choose to run for reelection, or if not, and then other people could choose to pull papers. I think at that point, there would, there's different staggered terms, but for now, I believe you would just, if you agree and wanted to do this, you would look to appoint people from now until the annual town election. That's one item. The second item is, I would strongly urge you to appoint an interim sewer superintendent. And I've already had preliminary discussions with our Highway Superintendent, Dave Taylor, who's done this twice before, and he has cautiously agreed to help us again in this capacity. And I want to just state, I know the board knows this, but I want to state for the public's benefit that since the last time that Mr. Taylor helped the town and stepped up to be the interim superintendent, since that time, he's really stepped back from that role. He's really just stayed within the Highway Department and Stormwater and Cemetery and the other things that he does. So there was, he had no role in, or, you know, I don't know how else to say it, really, no role in what ended up happening with, for whatever reasons, the Sewer Commissioners chose to resign. It had nothing to do with Mr. Taylor. I want to thank him for what he's done in the past and for, you know, agreeing to put his name forward for you to consider to do this again. If you want to consider this and, and do this tonight, we haven't gotten to the point where we've talked about any details about what any kind of financial compensation would look like, because this is an entirely different situation than when he's, what he did previously, before there was a full Board of Sewer Commissioners with experience in place. Now there aren't, so it would be all on him. So I think he, if he agrees to do this, and if you choose to appoint him, I think he'll want a little bit of time to really get a handle on the amount of hours and the complexity of what's involved, and then he'd come back to you, you know, with a proposal on, on what an appropriate and fair compensation would be for that. Then, what I would recommend is, once you later appoint board, temporary or interim sewer commissioners, should you choose to do that, I recommend that you have that board vote to either retain Mr. Taylor in that role, or maybe they'll want to bring somebody else in. But I think normally it would be the sewer commissioners that would appoint a superintendent or interim, but since there aren't any, I think you should do it now, and then they, the future board can confirm it or bring in somebody different if they want. I did put on the agenda, on page two of the agenda, call for letters of interest for residents to serve as temporary sewer commissioners until the April twelfth town election per MGL Chapter forty-one, Section eleven. I took the liberty of doing that. Obviously, I spoke to Tiffany before we posted the agenda, because that kind of serves as a public announcement that we are seeking letters of interest. But of course, this is only assuming you want to go down that track. So I guess, again, in, you know, in recap, as of last Monday, all the sewer commissioners have resigned. We have no superintendent in place. I recommend that you appoint interim superintendent, interim commissioners and an interim superintendent. Dave Taylor is here because of a later agenda item. I'm sure he'd be willing to answer questions if you had any, anything for him. And that's kind of my brief summary. I'm happy to try to answer any questions if I can. I hope that made sense.
Thank you. So we, there's, this is, we have a number of things to address. It, it sounds like we very well could have a motion in terms of the interim superintendent, but before we move forward in any of these, do we have questions or comments from the board?
So if we did appoint Dave tonight, you mentioned that he'd come back and probably at our November first or November fifth meeting and talk about what the compensation would be, so he'd be doing it for these three weeks? That's just part of his normal, what he's being compensated right now, or how would that work for these next three weeks?
So I guess my thought is, obviously, this is highly unusual. I've never been in a situation like this before. What I think would be fair would be that he, if, if you chose to appoint him, he'd do the work for a few weeks, and when he comes back for whatever amount is ultimately agreed to, it would be retroactive to the date that he started working. So I think if we go down this path, and, you know, we haven't had this in-depth of a discussion, you know, he's sort of taking a risk that he's gonna start doing some extra work on the assumption that at some point in the future, you guys are gonna agree on something that's mutually, you know, acceptable. So I think there's some risk on, on his part, but I don't think it would be fair to have him do that extra work without any additional compensation. I think it should be retroactive to the date he starts doing the work.
No, I, I just wanted to, it was more getting at, I wonder if you should wait until November fifth to appoint him at all, if, just because I don't want him to do work, you know, do the extra work for no compensation, so.
No, that's a good point. My, my fear is, again, that there's, you know, we, we have our administrative staff, Robin Davis is sitting with me, but I would personally be concerned without having someone available on site to, to supervise Violia, supervise all the engineers, deal with things in the street, which frankly, haven't always been occurring in the other periods of time that we haven't had a superintendent. So I, I personally think it would be better to have someone in place tonight.
All right, I guess as long as he knows there's, you know, a chance that it could, we may not decide to compensate him on November fifth. It's probably unlikely, but just as long as he, he's aware of that, so.
So.
Okay, go ahead, please. Well, I, I mean, I just wanted to make a statement about all this. I wanted to publicly thank the Sewer Commission for their service to Rockland. I'm not sure why they stepped down in their letter, it didn't quite say. But I, I'm just assuming they realized they were in over their heads at some point, and it, with the best interest of the town at heart, I applaud them for stepping down. So I also want to say something else. Everyone on this board is elected as an individual, okay? An individual representative. We each have individual focuses we work on to improve the town. My statements in the Select Board comments at the end of every meeting does not necessarily, and sometimes not typically, represent the sentiment of the entire board. So, in fact, I sometimes consult with other board members or Doug about what I'm planning to say, and they often encourage me not to say it. However, I have my entire life spoken out against things that are blatantly wrong or unjust, and all of my points are based on fact. I can back up everything that I say. There was an online discussion that I bullied the Sewer Commission to resign and disenfranchise the will of Rockland voters. What disenfranchises the will of Rockland voters is not enough people stepping up to run, when people run unopposed year after year after year. I totally disagree that I bullied them off. I asked them tough questions that they answered incompletely or didn't answer. So they chose to resign, and I, I really don't know why. So, and that's, that's what I have to say about that. But I do want to, and I, there are residents that stepped up, just like we're residents that stepped up to try to improve the town with the North Star of the best interest of the, of the residents of Rockland at heart, so. And that's, that's what I have to say about that. And, you know, I have worked with Dave since I was on Finance Committee, and I think he is just intelligent. He can see the, the full forest of everything and knows how pieces fit together, and I, I would happily vote for him tonight to become our superintendent in the interim, so.
Do you have other comments or questions? I would also like to thank the Sewer Commissioners for their years of service, and I would also like to thank Dave Taylor for agreeing to be willing, the willingness to serve as the interim director. Your years of experience, your, your knowledge would certainly be very helpful right now, given that we don't have anyone at that helm. Now, with that said, do we have a motion to appoint Dave Taylor for the interim sewer superintendent?
I wanted to add one, one thing before we did that. In, in appointing a new sewer commission, right, I, I invite people to apply for the position, but it, this is, this is one thing that the former sewer commission weren't quite experts at, that municipal finance, procurement, things like that. So this department, you know, Doug, Courtney, the, the accounting office, Allison, spent an inordinate amount of time holding their hands through these processes. And it, where we ended up wasting money, I think, was giving them their, their time to have a learning curve, right? I would like to try to appoint people to a sewer commission that can jump in day one and take the reins and, and work out what we need to work out as far as improving our sewers concerned. So that's, that's all I have to say. And I, I would make a motion to appoint Dave Taylor as the interim sewer superintendent.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Can I just make one other point, Tiffany? I want to piggyback on a little bit of what Lori said, because that was a good point I should have mentioned as well. I think the types of people that would be helpful to step up to serve as an interim commissioner would be people that have experience with infrastructure. Infrastructure, maybe engineering, public works, you know, those, those types of disciplines, I think would be, would be particularly helpful for someone stepping up. So I just, obviously, anybody's welcome to apply if they think they have something to add, but I think in particular, people with real knowledge and experience in construction, infrastructure, engineering is really, would be most helpful, in my opinion.
I do have just one other question, not related, but it's, it's related, but if, if we, for the, these people who are gonna step up to serve, they're gonna serve until the next annual town election. If we hold a special election in January, would that be where we fill these roles, or is it the annual election that we would fill these roles?
It's the annual town election.
It is the annual, okay.
All right. Then at that point, there would be a three-year term, a two-year term, and a one-year term for people to choose from.
I just wasn't sure if it was the next town election or the next annual election.
The next scheduled town election.
This, yeah, I mean, I'm not quite sure what to call it. But it's not, it's not a town election, I guess. This is a special district-wide election.
Well, if we put the debt exclusion on there, that's what I meant, is if we did the debt exclusion in January, does it then become a town election, and do we?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so maybe there's something to look into before we decide that.
So when we did the selectment a few years back, we announced a date for a special town election for those candidates that are running for those positions. So, I mean, if, you're right, I mean, if there is an election coming up in January, maybe then that's, that becomes the law, because that becomes the next scheduled election.
I don't know, there's some, we should probably have an answer to, because we're gonna talk about that, what, at our next meeting, make a decision, right? So just something to maybe get an answer for.
It actually references annual meeting, annual election.
Oh, annual, okay, that's fine. Thank you for bringing that up.
So with that said, we'll have a call for letters of interest for residents to serve as temporary sewer commissioners until April twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, town election per MGL Chapter forty-one, Section eleven. And residents that are interested in presenting a letter of interest, please direct them to the Select Board Office at Town Hall. You could also direct them to an administrator lap in his office, as they're the same. And with that said, are there any comments? I, I did receive an email this week. Yes, please, Jackie, and if you could also introduce yourself, Jacqueline.
I'm Jacqueline Tiso, and I live at Fort Smith on Rose Street. As Tiffany said, I requested via email to be able to speak tonight regarding the resignation of the entire Board of Sewer Commissioners. I wrote my comments out, just because it'll save us all from wandering around in the wasteland of trying to organize myself. The now former Board of Sewer Commissioners were three people from the community who stepped up to serve on a board that most people don't realize even exists, dealing with issues that myself and many others, including members of this board, don't understand. Given the current state of this critical piece of town infrastructure, we were fortunate to have very capable and ethical people serving on the Board of Sewer Commissioners, even more fortunate to have someone who had experience in environmental engineering and site cleanup. The members of the Board of Sewer Commissioners worked tirelessly, and more importantly, transparently. Their meetings and working meetings were conducted in open sessions, sessions that were then posted to W R P S YouTube for all to see. I know I do not need to go into their goals and accomplishments, as these were clearly stated in their letter of resignation. I'm gonna challenge you a little bit, Lori, on your comments. My concern is that the Board of Sewer Commissioners was subjected to a hostile work environment at the hands of the Select Board repeatedly throughout the spring and summer of this year. Select Board Member Lori Childs has called into question the ethics of the now former Board of Sewer Commissioners repeatedly, beginning with, as far as I know, the May seventh Select Board meeting, where she refused to support, vote to support the federal earmark that the Board of Sewer Commissioners was pursuing. These attacks continued in her Select Board comments on June fourth, June eighteenth, July ninth, August thirteenth, and then again on September seventeenth. I remain baffled by your confusion about the Sewer Commission's work, including the moratorium. Am I, am I funny?
No, not at all.
However, I'm frustrated with the harassment that the Sewer Commission was subjected to, which led to their decision to resign together. I am outraged that the Select Board chose to nullify my action as a voter, as well as other residents who supported these people. Week after week, the Select Board members talk about the lack of participation in town government and bemoan the unwillingness of the general public to step up. While three highly qualified, in my regard, people did step up in this case for a difficult task and were harassed into walking away. Anyone watching your meetings would think twice about running for anything in this town. As far as I'm concerned, when I watch these meetings, my thought is, who needs it? Going forward, it'd be good, it would be great to see this board use some conflict resolution skills instead of harassment, public humiliation, and intimidation. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you. No, I hear you. I totally hear you.
Thank you for your comment. Mary?
Yes, I'd like to ask two questions. What happened to the investigation into harassment and discrimination with the sewer chairman? Where is that at? And plus, who is going to adhere to the administrative order of the EPA administrative order? Because that's what causes the moratorium. They don't have to put on a moratorium when you have to keep your sewer treatment plant in compliance with what it's allowed to have, two point five million gallons a day. That's it. Rainstorms, it's all of that. But the administrative order, and how is, you're gonna have a fine coming at you. So who's gonna announce to the public on that? And plus, is the information from the contractor gonna be monthly to all of the people? Because there was a thing on the bulletin board that all information was to go through Dave Taylor and not through the commissioners. So are we going back to that? Or is the contractor gonna be able to give monthly updates?
Thank you for your comment, Mary. Thank you for your comment, Mary. In terms of the investigation, I'm not sure if that's something we're just able to speak to tonight. Attorney Clifford?
We reference what I presented to the board, the issue. I said pursuant to the town policy, we have to do an investigation. That obligation hasn't changed. It's hard to know what the resignation of the sewer commissioners, what impact that's going to have, but we do have to follow through with the investigation.
Right. And if I also may reiterate when, during the meeting, that that was initiated, it was also made clear that it was our legal obligation to enact an investigation because of the number of complaints that the Select Board received. And we also mentioned numerous times that that investigation by no means represented any inference to guilt or whatnot. It was just that we had a legal obligation to initiate an investigation. So, that is what we did.
If I could address one of the other issues Mrs. Parsons raised. The EPA consent order is binding on the town. The EPA's notice to the town of the violation was to the town administrator and the Select Board. The EPA does not draw a distinction as to which local political board has authority. The town to its executive branch is responsible. And at all stages, my office, Chris Cady from my office, work closely with the EPA. I know we've provided funding for engineers to make sure that we're in compliance. None of that is going to change. So, this doesn't change anything, it doesn't relieve anybody of obligations, and there's no reason why that work wouldn't continue.
One more comment, Mary.
I just want to say it was the EPA that came in touch with the chairman of the sewer commission, who put it to the town administrator. That's who they asked, who is in charge.
There may be a dispute of fact on how that went, but we did get notice from the EPA that obligated.
After the sewer chairman told them who the notice was to.
Thank you for your comment.
I just want to read one thing, and these are Chuck's exact words.
I actually would prefer us to move forward.
Okay. May I ask John one question?
John Clifford?
Yeah. I just want to ask one question. So, it's my understanding that the moratorium is not required by the EPA. They require that our commission, our sewer commission, has a plan and stick to it. And that, the EPA can institute a moratorium if the sewer commission continues to fail to follow the steps that they agreed to.
The EPA notifies us that we're in violation of the power. It's our obligation to come up with a plan, submit it to them for approval, that will get us back into compliance. The moratorium was part of that plan. So, as it stands right now, that is part of the approved plan before the EPA. But the EPA doesn't dictate the specific steps you have to do to get back into compliance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that said, any other? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have John Ward and follow-up to the September 3, 2024 Select Board meeting. John, you're welcome to come on up.
My name is John Ward, I'm a 22nd and 7th Sewer. My wife Cindy and I have lived in this town for 50 years. And in that timeframe, I've served on a lot of boards and committees in this town. Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, Police Station Building Committee, library trustees. For 13 years, I was one of the residents that worked on the redevelopment of the former Naval Air Station. I'm here tonight to address some comments that we made, since my name is brought up at the September 3 meeting, in response to a complaint I filed for an open meeting violation.
We have a backup microphone.
Okay. Wasn't sure. What I'm allowed to do at this time is read a letter I've written to the Attorney General of the Commonwealth. Dear Attorney General Campbell, On the evening of August 13, 2024, I attended the meeting of the Rockland Select Board. Toward the very end of the meeting, members of the board gave their individual comments about various topics. One board member, Lori Childs, made critical comments about a sewer commissioner who was not present in the room. After the comment period ended, the chairperson spoke about going into executive session. People began to rise to leave the room. One was a police officer who stood up, and several women who were exiting the meeting. At the same time, I approached the board and asked the chairperson to recognize me. The chairperson stated that she was not going to recognize me. I said, you don't have to recognize me. With that, I started to speak so everyone could hear me. I directed my comments to Lori Childs. I said, you don't have any business making comments about anyone who is not in this If you want to run for sewer commissioner, then resign from the board, Select Board, and run for sewer commissioner. I then stopped speaking. Select Board members then made a motion to go into executive session without stating the reason. The chairperson did not take a roll call vote. The board voted to go into executive session in violation of the open meeting law. On August 19, 2024, I filed an open meeting law violation complaint with the town clerk and Select Board Office. In his letter to me of September 6, 2024, town administrator Douglas Lapp acknowledged the open meeting violation. He said that the violation was inadvertent and was actually caused by a disturbance that I created. He stated, quote, "During your disruptive behavior, a police officer in the audience had to stand up in case he was needed to restore order, and several audience members appeared nervous and began to leave." One only needs to review the video recording of the meeting to see that Mr. Lapp's statement is an over-exaggerated description of the event. This was Mr. Lapp's attempt to divert attention from the fact that the open meeting law was violated by the board. The entire matter could have been avoided if board members or the town administrator had offered proper guidance to the chairperson. That did not happen. Ultimately, the open meeting law violation was acknowledged, and corrective action was taken by the Select Board. So, here we are in an open meeting. When you have negative comments being made about individuals that are not present, it poisons the atmosphere, not only in the meeting, but in the room, the town hall, and the town. Okay? We have situations now where people do not want to volunteer for boards and committees. People do not want to run for elected office. And yet, worse yet, in the last several years, we've had people resigning from elected positions. Talking about Board of Health, Treasurer, our tax collector fortunately decided to run for reelection. Now, we have the entire Board of Sewer Commissioners resign. And I have to tell you, in the 50 years I've been in this town, this sewer plant situation is the biggest threat this town is facing. We're on our second consent order, all right? Now, when I served on the Board of Selectmen years ago, the landfill became an issue. The Board of Selectmen at that time had to take control of the landfill and correct it. Mass DEP was in this process of lining up the town for substantial fines in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and having those fines continue until the landfill was corrected. The whole place was out of compliance with boundaries, heights, slopes. To make a long story short, the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, sat down with the Mass DEP, worked out an arrangement, and the town ended up paying $2.6 million to fix it. And I can tell you, it was not fun. And that is just a small example of what we're facing with this sewer plant. The sewer plant was built in the 1960s. It has not been, had a major upgrade. We are at maximum capacity, okay? And in order to correct that, just to bring it up to current standard, it's going to cost millions. Now, early estimates have been $50 million and up. Now, I recall Mr. Hessian provided an estimate of $50 million, and the Select Board had a committee to give a number for the upgrade, and I believe they came in at $50 million at that time. Now, that just brings us to current standard. It does not take into consideration future growth. We cannot accommodate future growth. It's not unless, unless a secondary facility of some kind gets built, and that's going to be for more money. Now, the EPA issued a consent order, I think in 2006, which was ignored. They issued another consent order in 2022, and I realize that our former sewer commissioners worked very diligently with the EPA to work out an arrangement. And I can tell you, if anybody thinks we're going to get around the EPA in some way and start granting sewer hookups, if you violate the current order, consent order, all it will take is the EPA to go into court to wrest control of the sewer plant. They will come in, they will get it fixed, and they will give the town the bill. And I even heard some numbers talked about in the area of $100 million. And who would pay that? The rate payers, exclusive of any grants that might be out there. I don't know if there would be, but you're talking, spreading that over 20 years. You think you're paying high fees now? I mean, do the math. If you take $100 million, 7%, 20 years, divided by 5,000 households, you're probably going to be looking at maybe $150 a month more than what you're paying now. Or, who knows? Okay? That's up in the air. But the commentary has to stop. Negative commentary has to stop. It's not doing anything, and that's why I'm here.
Ward, do we have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the FY '26 budget calendar.
Thanks, Tiffany. I will say, I stand by the letter. I, my own eyes and ears, we were all in the room. This is an example of being asked not to believe what you actually hear and see. So, I stand by the letter, and it was submitted to the State Attorney General's office. Included in your packet is the budget calendar. Let me know if you have any comments or changes. Same thing as always, it gets us from now until our annual town meeting, which will be May 5. The only change from prior years is we've accelerated a little bit, a little bit of the front phase. The town accountant and I have put out budget request forms and capital request forms to department heads a little bit earlier this year. The same due date, just giving people more time to submit their budget requests. So, with that, I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions on the budget calendar that you may have. All right, thank you. And if I need any updates to it, I'll be sure to let you know.
All right. Next, we have other new business not reasonably anticipated.
I have none.
Old business, November 20, 2024, special town meeting warrant.
All right, thanks, Tiffany. I thought there may have been a chance that we would need to reopen the warrant and have an additional article, but we, in fact, do not need to do that. John Clifford is just taking, John Clifford is taking the final look at the warrant, but it will be ready for you to sign shortly. I'll just very quickly run through the list of the 11 articles again. Article 1, increasing the school budget. Article 2, correcting a typographic error in one salary line. Article 3, CPA article for historic preservation at the G A R Hall. Article 4, CPA historic preservation of the Tramp House. Article 5, CPA historic preservation of headstones at the Old Town Cemetery. Article 6, additional funding for the ADA park at Union and Water Streets. Article 7, joint waterworks generator repairs. Article 8, increasing revolving fund spending limits at the sewer department. Article 9, South Shore Tech amending the regional agreement. Article 10, paying for Plymouth County outreach program dues for the police department from opioid settlement funds. Article 11 is re-appropriating a prior town meeting article that was initially going to be used to relocate the rec department to a privately leased space, and now we're going to re-appropriate that to be used for town-owned space at the Esten School. That's all I have on the warrant.
Thank you. Next, we have project updates. Mass DOT State Transportation Improvement Project grant for VFW Drive, Weymouth.
Great. And our Assistant Administrator Courtney Biergard is up to the table, so I will kick it over to her. There's just two things she's going to give an overview on, and Dave Taylor's here as well. Something we've talked about a lot over the last year or two, VFW Drive and Hingham Street. But I don't want to steal their thunder, so with that, I'll have Courtney give you guys a brief update.
All right. So, you should have received a very rudimentary map in your package today. We are still reviewing the design schematics that were sent over by the engineering company, which is the engineering firm that we're, that we've contracted with for these two projects. So, the State Transportation Improvement Project, or the TIP project, is along VFW Drive from Union Street all the way down to the, basically, Abington Street in the Hingham Line. So, it goes through the intersection at Reservoir Park Drive and VFW slash Weymouth Street, that intersection. And then, the second project that I'm going to give an update on today is the Mass Works Project. And I'm giving them together because they're connected. So, the Mass Works Project is from the intersection of Reservoir Park Drive and VFW Drive, and it goes down to Hingham Street, and then from Hingham Street all the way over to Pond Street. And there, the TIP project is a state project. They do an annual, every year, projects are added to a list. And to get on the list, Dave and his team, I believe, did a significant amount of work back in 2022. Is that when you guys were added to the list?
Yeah.
And basically, it's, it's an annual, I'm just giving a little bit of background information. I think it's helpful to understand. The list is from the state, and they provide basically a priority list on updates for things like bicycle paths, bridges, roadway sidewalks, transit investments. And it's a combined, like, effort between MassDOT and other state agencies. So, the TIP project in particular was of high priority because of some of the investment that is happening in the area that we're all very aware of, which is the Union Point Project. So, I think that that was kind of what put it over the edge. We have a couple of, just like a general description of the improvements that residents can expect there is widening of the road slightly, addition of sidewalks, there's a shared-use path that will be added, and some landscaping. shared use path that will be added, and some landscaping slash grass buffer along the corridor as well. And then just a quick update on funding sources. We've used $135,000 from our Marijuana Host Community Agreement Funds. Those were allocated at the annual town meeting back in, in May. And then we've received a state budget earmark of $80,000 from the Massachusetts Transportation Fund that was approved in August of 2023. And Dave, you might need to chime in here a little bit, but how I understand it is the TIP project, the, the town is responsible to get it to a certain percentage of design, and then the state will come in and help fund the capital infrastructure improvements associated.
That's where I think 40 to 60%.
Yeah, we have to get it to 40 to 60%. So once we hit that threshold, then we'll be able to secure the additional funds to complete the project. So that's just a quick update on where that, where that is. We are right about 10% actually right now for the TIP project, and we're anticipating that we'll meet with MassDOT in early December of 2024. But right now, we're reviewing a 10% design. So we'll start talking to some of the abutters of the property over the next couple of months. Dave and I and, and other departments who will be impacted will start having conversations with abutters and residents who may be impacted by those improvements along the corridor. So that's the TIP project. And then the second project is the Mass Works Project. That is, or the, the Hingham Street Corridor Project, which is a Mass Works grant. We received $975,000 for that grant, and so, and we also received $165,000 in private funds to help us start the process for this grant. Right now, that is a little bit further along than the TIP project. We're right about 50% for the town design, and once we, the 90, the $975,000 will get us all the way through our design phase for that corridor from Reservoir Park Drive to Hingham Street over to Pond Street. It'll get us all the way 100% design. Right now, that anticipated design is set for May of 2025, so next May. And T E C has indicated that we would have bid plans and specifications in June. And then what would happen is we would go back and apply again for additional capital grants to do the upgrades along the Hingham Street corridor. I just wanted to kind of make sure that you all were up to date on where we are in the process. This is probably going to start, we'll probably start having more and more conversations with residents, so I want to make sure that you all are aware, residents and business owners that are impacted along that corridor. And ultimately, the goal of, of this, these two projects is to prepare the corridors for what we know will be coming, which is development investment that is on our border, if not in our community. And widening the road will help with traffic flow and help with traffic mitigation around those different development projects and help also beautify and make those areas more walkable and accessible for residents and business, business people who are in that area as well. So I don't know, I don't have any other, like, major technical things to add. Dave, do you want to add anything technical, or did I miss anything big, do you think?
No, I mean, the TIP project, as far as the, the land takings, that, like, what Courtney was referencing, that's from Union Street on VFW all the way down to the town line, Hingham and Waymouth. But there's not a lot of takings on that property, because that was originally done by the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's a very wide format there. So that, that helps us out a lot, obviously. And there's, there's a lot of underground infrastructure improvements that are also in the TIP project, and there'll be water, sewer, there'll be gas updates, utility pole updates. So there's a lot with that TIP project, which originally started out at $12 million. I think the last was 15 to 17, and then by the time, you know, you'd be looking well over $20 million. So as far as the Mass Works grant is, I mean, just to have, you'd have sidewalks on that street for the first time, so that obviously would help with the restaurants, the hotels. So, I mean, we're really excited about it. Like, that's, that Mass Works is like two to three years away, and then the TIP project's like five to seven years away, like, right after it. So that will completely change that, that whole area role there, as far as widening, you know, pedestrian flow, bicycle flow. So, I mean, it, it's going to be a huge improvement for the town.
Yeah. I think connectivity is a big key about it. It will allow for a lot more connectivity from, over by the Home Depot area, all the way, in, all the way up along Union Street, at least by foot and by, by bike, and it'll be a little bit easier access by car. So I'm excited about it, but I, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has about this, or, and we will be bringing T E C back to give the Select Board a more in-depth review of the actual design schematics, once we've had a chance to have some more conversations with some of the abutters of the, this, these two projects.
Yeah. Just for transparency purposes, what are takings? Just for people's knowledge.
Doug, you want to hop in here a little bit? You have a little bit more familiarity of the technical aspects.
So when Dave talks about the format, right, that's like the legal boundaries of a road, and a lot of times, people don't realize, say, with their yard, they might think that where the pavement ends is where, like, the town road ends, and all the grass they have in their yard is, is their personal, you know, property, their personal real estate. But it's oftentimes, it's actually not. The format of the road can extend actually up into what looks like your, your yard. And when you buy your house and you're signing all the closing documents, you'll see those various documents. So where there's a taking is where the format is narrower, and in order to be able to widen the road, say, for example, on Hingham Street currently, where it's, you know, two lanes in one direction, and it pinches into one, and we want to widen it so keep the traffic flow going, part of that area, and I won't highlight a particular area, the format may not be wide enough. So the taking refers to whether it be a friendly, hopefully a friendly eminent domain taking means the town either actually acquires the real estate, or maybe just acquires an interest in the real estate, like an easement, or it's a way to basically kind of take over a, a sliver of land in order to accommodate the road, the sidewalk, et cetera. And the outreach that Courtney is talking about is making sure very early in the planning, design phases, that the engineers and Courtney and Dave are communicating with any properties that might possibly be affected, so that they can have input on the design and, and understand, you know, what potentially could happen, and so that, so there's full transparency. So that's, hopefully that, that made sense, and it explains the answer.
Thank you.
Yeah. And these are, these are draft design schematics, and so, to your point, Doug, like, the purpose of us meeting with these property owners and, and abutters to the property is to get their input and, and talk to them about the impacts, because it is still in a draft design schematic form right now. So that's kind of our goal over the next couple of months, getting, getting some of those conversations rolling.
Thank you for the update. Any other comments? Okay. Other old business not reasonably anticipated?
None.
Okay. Town administrators' report and correspondence.
Thank you. I actually did just think of one last thing I could say to the last topic that Courtney and Dave were talking about, which is, even if we don't have future development happening at Union Point, I think these projects will help our current conditions. It'll help, you know, the fat traffic jams that we get on Hingham Street, it'll help the traffic flow on VFW Drive and create a safer environment. So I don't, I don't want to give people the impression it's solely only going to help if there's new development at Union Point. This will help our current, our, our, our current traffic and pedestrian activity. Four quick things for my TA report. The first is, the financial team and I had a bond rating update call with Moody's last week, and I just, there were kind of two things I just wanted to convey. One is, it's always good to get external professional feedback on some of our processes, and they made a point of highlighting that our conservative approach to budgeting is correct and is the best practice, and so that was sort of reinforced. So that was good feedback to hear. And then, interestingly, they asked us quite a bit about our investment in cybersecurity. And so it's interesting for a couple reasons. So the first is, you know, when I explained what we're doing through our IT department, they confirmed again that we are doing all the right things, and they expect us to continue investing in those areas. And they gave some pretty staggering numbers as far as all the different communities or districts that they, they might give ratings for. You'd be shocked at what a large percentage actually end up getting hit with some kind of cyber attack, ransomware, whatever. So it's gotten to the point where the financial rating industry wants to see what you're doing, like, it's that prevalent and that important. So I kind of say that because we're doing all the right things, but we're going to continue to want to do more. And depending on what our revenues look like, the IP director has already brought forward some additional initiatives that if funding is available, he'd like to do. So I'm just kind of teeing it up that it's not just because we're being overly cautious, but literally, you know, Moody's and S and P recognize how important this is for financial health in our community. That's item one. The next is, I put in your mailbox of the most recent flyer that South Shore Tech just put out for their building project. I'm not going to go into it in any depth, but basically, they're currently, they're looking at a total project cost for the new school at South Shore Tech. The total cost is currently estimated to be $276 million, and the, the net district share after MSBA state reimbursement could be in the $166 to $168 million range. We did a quick back of the envelope based on our share of enrollment, and like roughly, we'd be looking at like a $35 million cost to the, to Rockland taxpayers. And we've talked about that before, we'll talk about it again at the next meeting, but that is a new document summarizing the project that is in your box. Third, I know I've touched on this earlier, but since our last meeting, we have now formally engaged with the consultants to do the survey work and wetlands delineation and all the engineering design for a feasibility study for a new track at the Vicentemule Track. And I think the hope is, from the Parks Commissioners and the CPA Committee, is to have this study done, completed, and kind of thoroughly vetted in time, that there could be an article at the annual town meeting in May to potentially fund the actual construction of this project. It will certainly be large enough that we will not be able to pay cash, so if we're going to fund it through the CPA, we could issue borrowing and pay the debt service back through the recurring CPA revenues. But main point there is if people see activity, they see surveyors and, and flags and things like that, that's all associated with the, the feasibility study phase of this track project. So I know a lot of people are going to be excited about that. And then this wasn't really originally in my notes, but I just really wanted to give an extra thank you to our highway superintendent, Dave Taylor. You know, all this stuff with sewer is difficult. You know, it's, our, our three major pieces of infrastructure is, in a particular order, you know, water, sewer, and roads, in any community. Those things are, are critical. And, you know, Dave could very easily just stay in his lane and just do pavement and roads. Now, he's already done more for the community with stormwater, which is a significant state requirement that somebody had to do. We've thrown on cemetery oversight, that's more, and now this would be the third time that he's, you know, volunteered to help us. And it's a thankless job, as we can all see from, you know, the discussions we've had. This is a difficult, difficult issue because of decades and decades of deferred investment in our sewer plant. But I really want to thank him for his professionalism and being willing to step up again on a temporary basis to help us, get us through this period of time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Select Board comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individuals do not necessarily reflect the views of the Select Board and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Select Board Member Olafland?
I have no comments tonight.
Select Board Member Ellard?
Yeah, I guess I have a few things. First, I want to thank the people who came to speak tonight, Jackie, Mr. Ward, even, especially Mary. I think it's important, I know we couldn't get the public comments on there, but I think this was a little bit of a indication that we can make it work. People will ask to get on the agenda. I think it's important to hear opinions, especially ones that we may not agree with. And it's, I'm thankful that people came tonight, the first kind of chance since we kind of talked about the public comments at the last meeting. So I'm thankful for them to, to come forward. I also would like to thank the three members of the Sewer Commission. I know you guys did a lot of work, and also, I'd like to apologize to them. I probably should have been more vocal in supporting my support for them and letting them know that, that I certainly didn't share some of the comments that were made up here, and I probably should have done them more of that. And if I had known it was going to lead to them resigning en masse, I certainly wish I could have said more about, at the time. It's probably a little late for that now, but I think that's it.
Thank you. Select Board Member Charles, pardon me, Vice Chair Charles?
I just want to talk about moving forward. And I think everybody involved, whether you live in this town or you don't, like, I know Doug, Courtney, Allison doesn't live in town, and they seem to be our biggest cheerleaders sometimes in keeping the best interests of residents as our North Star. So change is inevitable, but we can be in charge of the changes we want to see in our community. So what kind of town do we want? You know? One where families can grow and thrive, one that's, where a diverse section of people can call home, one where seniors can age and grow comfortably, one where people have easy access to all the amenities they need within a short walk or drive, one where people from other towns flock to investing in Rockland's goods and services to boost our local economy. I mean, those are just a few. Rockland loses out if we sit on the sidelines with little to no new growth. And for that reason, I would like to ask that on a future, sooner than later, agenda, that we put a new growth discussion to talk about it, from a financial perspective, maybe with Doug and Allison and Courtney, and talk about it from a planning perspective, and how, and maybe Dave too, how we can fold the challenges in the sewer into that goal. I know it's not going to be a quick process, but I don't think it'll take 15 to 20 years either. I could be wrong. But, you know, I, I would like to have that discussion, just to, you know, give a different perspective. And, and thanks to the rec department, Fall Fest was amazing. So that's all I got.
Great. And I don't have any more comments this evening, except have a great night, everyone.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?